I call this meeting to order. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Bienvenidos todos. We are going to call the roll and establish a forum.
Alderman Beebe?
Here.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia? Here. Alderman Santiago?
Here.
Alderman Sheehan?
Here.
Alderman Hallett?
Here.
Alderman Carreto Munoz?
Here.
Alderman Demas?
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson?
Present.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Switek?
Here.
Alderman Stout?
Here.
Alderman Avinia Soto?
Present.
Alderman Murano?
Here.
Alderman Myers?
Here.
Okay, we have a forum. And just a housekeeping note, I've just been informed that our speaker system in here should be repaired in short order, so next time we are here, hopefully we'll have functioning microphones and speakers. We are going to move to our public participation. And if anyone has not yet turned in a form, please do so. But we will begin with Luis Handel.
Mr. Lee, I say good morning, then people correct me, so good evening. I did read this same thing to the Finance Committee, but I feel like it's important that everybody in the council hear all the comments that are made. I was at the last Finance Committee meeting prior to tonight, when the grocery tax topic was brought up. The committee had a brief discussion and the staff presentation was equally brief. I feel like the committee and subsequently the council can only make adequate decisions with an abundance of data and some time for thoughtful discussion. On the surface, it seems like people think changing the tax source to retail from grocery seems like a fair and easy fix, but I think there's a lot to consider. And I made my comments, you know, before they had their discussion. So I take that into account. I read, but I would like verification on whether the state suspended the grocery tax for some time. If so, when and did this, how did the city manage that decreased income? It was my understanding from what I read that it was one year without grocery tax. So I didn't get any answer in the Finance Committee because they can't comment to me, but there was also no discussion about that topic that's a little concerning to me. Because that's a big hole. Currently, which communities with similar demographics or otherwise have made a decision to continue or not continue with the 1% grocery tax? If not, what was their alternative budget adjustment? And if where they were home rule or not home rule, does that affect their alternatives? What are the current exemptions, if any, to paying the grocery tax, for example SNAP recipients? And if that exemption, if they changed to, we changed to a retail tax, would that exemption continue? Or is this basically just adding on something to them they didn't have in the first place? So I appreciate the attention to income challenges, but I think if we were to go with the retail tax, we should be sure that's really saving somebody money. And I think it's brought up that a lot of the retail taxes, if that was changed, would be paid by out of out of the community, people driving through, I don't know that that can be assumed. Because maybe, you know, BP, yeah, people probably stop at BP that don't live here, but that doesn't, maybe wouldn't be a good substitution. And at some point, I thought somebody brought up another meeting, whether we could sign on to continue the grocery tax this year and then reevaluate how it affected our budget, was it, you know, a big problem or not? And if we decided that that wasn't a good option, can we just discontinue that grocery tax? And then move to the retail tax without tacking it on, right? Making it be a substitution for that. Because, you know, it's easy to add a tax. Never really going to always be reduced. So consider that I made these comments already for the committee. And I'd really appreciate getting answers.
Thank you. And I think I can just quickly answer one factual thing, that the state removal of the grocery tax doesn't go into effect until January 1st of this upcoming year, so we haven't been without it yet.
No, I mean, well, so prior year.
You're at your, so the que, can you clarify your question?
Twenty-two, my understanding is that from July 1st, the fiscal year of the state, July 1st to June 30th, 2022 to 23, there was this.
Okay.
All grocery tax.
And, and, and so how did that affect us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we have Mr. Kurt Gerres.
Good evening, Mayor Bovee, thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you and through you to the City Council. I don't have prepared remarks this evening, but I do have a couple of points that I wanted to make. First, I wanted to reiterate my concern over wasteful spending. While I was unaware a couple of years ago of the city's approval to spend $2 million fixing up a building on Main Street in the downtown district. To me, that demonstrates two failures, one, a failure of wasteful spending by wannabe entrepreneurs who don't put their own money at risk for potentially adverse investments. And two, a severe lack of communication at the, the lack of the City Council's ability to communicate to its residents the cost that they are willing to spend on our dime. When you calculate the cost per resident, that means I, as a sole income provider for my family, am responsible for spending $500 toward that building that I will never step foot in. My money, of course, being divided over the course of two years that have been spent. If I had the free will option, I wouldn't have put a dime into a building that didn't belong to me over this regard. So I'm disappointed in that. Number two, regarding wasteful spending. Mayor Bovee, I recognize that you are trying to be politically savvy with the upcoming discussion this evening over the settlement with Michael Gutman. However, I do voice my personal disagreement over this route, while I recognize the political advantageousness of it. You once called his contract an illegal contract. And I agree with you. I think it's an illegal contract. I think the previous administration subverted your authority as mayor of this town. We have rules that govern this, this city. And what the previous City Council did was to subvert the rules and authority. So when we have people talking about how we have rules to govern this city, I recommend the City Council to review those rules. I'm in a discussion forum where a gentleman, I'm not sure who he is, his name is Ricardo, said, boy, I hope they set up rules to prevent this from happening in the future. I replied this evening, just briefly while sitting there, saying, they already have rules about it. You guys don't need to pass rules, it's already there. Nevertheless, I recognize the political advantageousness of the situation, which you have seemingly brokered, but I would still voice my disagreement with that route. And want to make known to the City Council what a cushy offer you have made to Gutman. While I disagree with it, I think it's something that they should consider how kind and generous of an offer you've made, when really he should get nothing according to the rules that govern the city. Thank you so much.
Okay, that is all the cards that I have. Did we miss anyone tonight? Hay alguien más que quería hablar? Okay. We will proceed to item number five. The meeting minutes from June 16th, 2025. We would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Yes, Alderman Switek? Is there a second? Alderman Alcantara Garcia? And we are going to do a voice vote for that one? That's all right with everyone? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
I abstain also.
Two abstentions. Okay. We will continue to the consent agenda. Are there items?
Disbursement.
Disbursement report? Thank you. We will continue to number six, which you are correct, does follow after five. Corporate dispersment report. And I believe Alderman Demas, yes?
Yes, Your Honor. I move, I make a motion to approve with the change. This is pending the legality of the motion of the vacancy on the May 5th meeting to withhold $28,012.50 from the budget to Bonn Conway for the expenses of them continuing to be here from that meeting. So that reduces the budget, the corporate dispersment report down to $2,312,666.24.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the corporate dispersment report?
I made the motion to approve and that change.
And with that change, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, we're going to call the roll.
Alderman Demas?
Aye.
Alderman Hallett?
Aye.
Alderman Beebe?
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia?
Aye.
Alderman Santiago?
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan?
Aye.
Alderman Carreto Munoz?
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Switek?
Aye.
Alderman Stout? Alderman Avinia Soto?
Uh, nay.
Alderman Murano?
Aye.
Alderman Myers?
Aye.
Okay. That passes. Number seven, our consent agenda. I believe we do have something we are going to pull, Alderman Beebe?
I'd like to pull item 7C from the consent.
Okay, pull item 7C. Anything else? Yes, Alderman Murano?
Restructure?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, Your Honor, we have two items, and we have resolution, I'm sorry, item 7A, Resolution Number 25R 0045, a resolution authorizing the executive office manager to execute PLR 09110, resolution for improvements under the Illinois Highway Code for the mayor to execute PLR 09150, request for expenditure authorization of water fuel tax funds, the amount of $750,000 for the 2024 Harvester Road Reconstruction Project. And item 7, Resolution Number 25R 0046, resolution authorizing the executive office manager to execute PLR 09110, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, and the mayor to execute PLR 09150, request for expenditure authorization of rebuild Illinois funds in the amount of $1,780,000 for the 2024 Harvester Road Reconstruction Project. And with that, I make a motion.
Thank you, do we have a second? Alderman Smith? And just a point of clarification for anyone out there who's wondering why that looks so familiar. Last meeting, we voted on the same thing. But staff found out that the, because of an I dot requirement, we had put it into one resolution and it had to be broken into two in order for us to get our funding. So that's why we're voting on it again, just in case you're wondering, okay? So let's call the roll.
Okay. Alderman Murano?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Beebe?
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia?
Aye.
Alderman Santiago?
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan?
Aye.
Alderman Hallett?
Aye.
Alderman Carreto Munoz?
Aye.
Alderman Demas?
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson?
Aye.
Alderman Switek?
Aye.
Alderman Stout?
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto?
Aye.
Alderman Myers?
Aye.
Okay. That passes. We will proceed to number eight, reports by committee. Alderman?
You missed one, item's not sent to committee.
Well, that's the one that we pulled.
Remove that one.
We pulled that from consent and we're gonna.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize, don't get mad at me.
No need. I am not mad, and I don't think any of us are. Thank you for that clarification. So we don't have anything, infrastructure, finance, or?
They can do that too.
Okay, all right. We will proceed to number nine, and we will, first of all, take item 7C, which we pulled from the consent agenda, and we will entertain in a motion for ordinance number 2500023. Yes, okay, we have motion, thank you, and a second. Second.
Was that Birch Ferguson?
Birch Ferguson was the motion, and Alderman Demas was the second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Alderman? Okay, well, let, let's go ahead and take a voice vote on this one, if that seems good to everyone here.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Should we go ahead and read the motion, just so everyone's aware what that was?
Yes, yeah, would you, would you do us the honor, Alderman Demas?
That's 7C ordinance number 2500023. This is an ordinance amending section 7.51A of Article 6 of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Chicago to modify the boundaries of the East Washington Street Historic District in the City of West Chicago, in Page County, Illinois. Thank you.
Yes, well, let's, it just in, in a quick word of explanation there, the, the the section of land that we are pulling is vacant land, so there's there's nothing historic on it. And in the, for transparency, Alderman Beebe owns that lot, and that's why he pulled it off of the consent agenda, if any of you are wondering, because he wanted to be able to to abstain from that, from that vote, which was a proper thing to do, so thank you. But we will go ahead and take a voice vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. At this moment, I'm going to ask Ms. Kraft if she can just give us a quick word of explanation, follow-up from her presentation that she made to us earlier. Thank you.
Sure, I think it'd be helpful if I talked for a couple of minutes, because the City Council was bombarded on Wednesday night of a holiday weekend with a lot of things on the agenda. So I just thought maybe we could kind of give a broad overview to the council about what's happening here. So when I appeared last time, we talked about trying to broker a peace agreement between all these different conflicting arguments about powers here. And there were several parts of that, and then we took the little poll, the informal poll of the City Council about what to proceed with. And, and for the most part, the majority at least wanted to proceed on a lot of things. So the items that you have on the agenda tonight, first of all, we have a contract with Mr. Gutman, which we have thoroughly negotiated with him and with his attorney. And the mayor's prepared to sign that, and Mr. Gutman's prepared to sign that if that's acceptable to the council. And by the way, we know we bombarded you with a lot of stuff, and it was right before the holidays. We had a shorter week to get you everything because of the deadline with the holidays. So as we go through these things, when you call them individually, we know you're going to have questions or comments or whatever, and we'll just, we'll take them as we go through them. But I just want to give you an overview of what they are. The second thing we have is the appointment of the police chief. The third thing we have would be the appointment of the interim city administrator. Now, on those two items, if you go through and confirm the mayoral appointment tonight, then we will have contracts for them at the next City Council meeting for you to review. We don't have those tonight. The third thing, or actually, item E, is restructuring legal services under the city code. And that's where we talked about creating the Office of Legislative Council. Now, this is just a, an ordinance creating that position, but one of the things that the council would need to discuss is how you want that to work. Because in several communities, we've had people say, well, we don't want all the aldermen to be able to call the lawyers. We want to make sure if there's a question that, like, three of the aldermen agree ahead of time, some places designate a person, and then I know there's also questions about the dollar round and the limitations, so we can talk about that when we get to that. But that is the purpose of that restructuring ordinance. The next would be appointment of interim corporation counsel. So that would be the mayor's recommending that you hire our firm on a temporary basis, so you can go through a search process with the thought that we would be here for six months while that process occurred. And then also, I have provided the council with three separate law firms, and you can pick among those three. That would be for the greenhouse litigation, because it wouldn't be appropriate for the mayor to make an appointment with that instance. And then the other thing I get on here is a settlement agreement with the pending litigation between the mayor and the city council. We don't have a settlement agreement. Now there, if we want to go in a closed session and talk about that, that's fine. But I think if the council approves everything tonight, that lawsuit would probably be voluntarily just withdrawn, which would be the purpose of that. And then item I, I didn't have anything to do with. Item J then would be design, designating a search firm to go ahead and start with the process to find a, a city administrator. So that's the broad overview. I'll stick around in case there are questions, and I'll turn it back to you.
Great. Yeah. So that, none of that is, is new, it's, you know, the things that we've been talking about in principle for the, for the last few meetings. But that is the intention, that if we can move forward on all these things, then then point H will just drop the, drop the lawsuits, and then we will move forward. So I think we will go ahead and begin with B. Oh, yes, let's, let's get A out of the way, thank you. So last meeting, another just redo that we need to do. Apparently on the recording, we did not record a second when we approved this. And so to cross all our Ts and dot our Is, we are bringing ordinance 2500022 again, so that we can get a second with it. So we entertain a motion to pass ordinance number 2500022. Thank you, Alderman Myers, so moved, and Alderman Stout, second. And all in favor?
Aye.
All those things.
Okay, any opposed? And abstention? From Alderman Avinia Soto, any other extensions? Okay, thank you. B, Resolution Number 25R 0048, a resolution approving a certain employment agreement with Michael Gutman, Executive Director of Special Projects. So I will entertain a motion on that.
We have a discussion.
I, yeah, motion and the second, and then discussion, yep. Alderman Murano, and is there a second? Yes, Alderman Demas, I saw that hand first. Discussion. Let me just say a, a quick word. And then Alderman Murano, but just by way of, of preface here, I have been involved with negotiating with Mr. Gutman through our attorneys, and the reason why I, I think this works, and this is in part to address the public comment as well, is because essentially the, the, the money that we are that we are using to extend Mr. Gutman's contract is money that we have already given him, in essence. The contract that he was under previously, he had roughly six months of built-up vacation time and roughly months of built-up sick time. And under his contract, he was he was eligible to cash out 25% of that, of that sick time. And so what we have done here is, in lieu of him cashing that out, he is being offered a contract that gets him to January 31st, that allows him to retire. He will not be city administrator, and he will be remotely available to, to serve as needed with this new position that we have created for him. So the, and Mr. Mr. Gerres brought up the political expediency of that, and I suppose that is correct. But I would also point out that it's not merely political, but also practical in that by doing this, it doesn't cost us as a city anything extra. And it allows us to be able to move forward on making the changes that I believe I was elected to, to make by having a city administrator who, who I'm able to appoint that, that, that I know that I'm seeing eye to eye with. So that's kind of the, the reasoning in brief why, to me, this makes sense. Let's commence the discussion with Alderman Murano.
Oh, yeah, and, and I think it does outline my question here pretty well in the resolution, but just for clarification, the agreement of changing Michael's title to Executive Director of Special Projects is contingent on the signing of the agreement, which is exhibited.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep. Alderman Myers?
Detail, she said that it doesn't, it's not going to cost the, the city any money, but there is a $60,000 payout there, like, so in that, like, how much cash is going to happen here?
So once once the vacation time and sick time has been used up, there will remain an excess bank of sick days, which if cashed out would be about $75,000. So in lieu of that, he's accepting the $60,000 payment.
So I just want to just follow up, so to make it clear, so basically, the, the vacation time gets him to January, and then, and then after that, then there's an additional payout that is in lieu of sick time that he's owed.
Yeah, the, the vacation time gets him to early January, then he uses up a little bit of sick time to get to the end of January. And then what is left over after that would be the $75,000 cash payment if, if we were doing that, and include that, the $60,000. Alderman Switek?
But if I'm reading correctly, at the end, when we discuss the possibility of a search party, that's going to be a financial hit. And then finding an administrator on top of that with a salary will be another hit.
Alderman Demas, would you like to?
I'm just saying, we have to pay an administrator no matter what, so it would be, it's kind of moot point there.
I'm still saying.
Yeah.
We're going for two.
And I would also point out the fact that we would be hiring someone for a much lesser compensation package, which overall would, would save us quite a bit of money. And for the time And for the time that we are doing this search, we would essentially be paying uh Ms. Messino as our city administrator, but at that point, we won't be paying an assistant city administrator. And so any additional costs are compensated by a number of different factors.
Okay. Thank you for working this.
And I will say, because it's a lot on Ms. Messino that we do have, uh, it will probably um look at this uh next uh meeting, but we do have a uh an open um internship fellow position in that department that we would like to try to fill to to assist Ms. Messino and perhaps um be discussing a a motion to make that position a little bit more flexible in order to be helpful during this time that we don't have an assistant administrator. That's an FYI. Okay, any other discussion?
I want to make a quick comment. I I like the idea of of this, because we're able to do a search in parallel rather than series and like waiting till till the end of one, the city administrators firm, and then uh starting the search and then having to wait for how long it takes to find a new city, so I like that. We might as well just start by searching soon.
Okay. I believe we will call the roll.
Alderman Murano.
All right.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallit. Alderman Carrato Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay. Item C, discussion and possible action to approve mayoral appointment of Colin Fleury as police chief. Do we have a motion? Alderman Stout, I saw that, yeah, yeah. Alderman Stout, one, uh, is there a second? Alderman Avina Soto, this is a test of reflexes here, apparently. Uh, any discussion? Okay, let's uh do roll call vote.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallit.
Aye.
Alderman Carrato Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Item B. Discussion and possible action to approve mayoral appointment of Tia Messino as interim city administrator. We have a motion from Alderman Birch Ferguson, do we have a second? Alderman Hallit, have the second. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Hallit.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Carrato Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
That passes. All right, we started at precedent now. Okay, uh, that moves us to item E, discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty five oh zero zero two four, restructuring legal services. Uh, Alderman Demas.
Uh, yes, your honor, I'd actually like to make a motion to table this item for further uh search finding, so to speak.
Okay. Is there a second? Alderman Stout, okay, uh, discussion. Any uh, would would you mind giving us some of your thinking on that, Alderman Demas?
Well, as I looked at the ordinance, um, I wasn't necessarily in agreement with a lot of the language in that, so um, so that's why I would like to table it at this time.
Any other discussion? Any uh, would you mind giving us any any specific items you'd like us to be looking at, Alderman Demas?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Alderman Hallit. Thank you. Yep. You can give in one more second for any 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 comment or discussion. I will point out that these items were put together to be essentially passed uh as a comprehensive agreements. Um, and so it's going to throw a wrench into things if we don't have a comprehensive agreement. Alderman Myers.
I guess my comment would be like if the the end results that we don't need a legislative council, then then we've also gone through the agreement, so I I'm not sure that gets me, like just by delaying, it doesn't mean that it's going to go one way or the other. I mean, it doesn't feel to me like that 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 is going to throw a wrench in anything personally.
Okay. All right. Any other? Well, let's uh have a roll call.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallit.
Aye.
Alderman Carrato Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay. That has been tabled. Item number, or not number, letter uh F, appoint Ansel Glink as interim corporation counsel for a period not to exceed January fifth, twenty twenty six pursuant to attached engagement letter. Do we have a motion? Alderman Demas.
I I would like to also table this, because I feel it goes along with item.
If that is tabled, that will essentially uh stop all of this process.
Those ways.
We can't, we can't take all of this piecemeal. This was designed to be a comprehensive agreement, as we discussed multiple times. And and so let's go ahead and have a second, if we have a second, and then we can discuss. Second, okay, Alderman Myers, discussion. If we table this, then we have just torpedoed the entire thing.
I don't.
Yep.
I don't think getting into like a pro quo thing is a good idea. Like, we can't have one without the other. We can, we can move things and discuss it at another time, as we need more time to go through it and things like that. But doing a quick pro quo, I don't think is a good idea.
Um, can you spell out what you mean, we can't do a quick pro quo?
If we don't do this, then everything's ruined. I don't think that that's the case.
Okay, but where is the this for that in in there? I mean, in in
If we don't do this.
In an agreement, an agreement has two sides, and both parties are um making concessions. And this whole thing was put together, as you all very well know, as a very delicate agreement that has uh, that has multiple sides. And so if if we, if we, if we torpedo the process, we are going to be putting the city into a place where um we may not have a corporate council. We will be going to court on Thursday. Um, and we may not have a city administrator for a time. Yes?
I have a question, if we if we table this or if we don't pass this, so this is about the interim corporate corporation council, um, like who will be our corporation council?
So Mr. Jacobson uh will continue to be the corporation council. But as you all know, um, there is a pending lawsuits regarding that, and so we will be going to court on Thursday. We will be spending a lot more city money. And we will be putting ourselves in jeopardy of this entire agreement falling apart. Mr. Murano.
Isn't that the lawsuit that you brought against the council?
There's two components to it. There's uh there is a um there is a a request for declaratory judgment that I brought. And then there is a response by Mr. Bond, which um is also out there. So it's it's going to get very it's going to get very complicated if we start trying to piecemeal this thing. Yes, Alderman Hallit, and yes?
So often, when things come before this council, it doesn't get immediately approved or passed. We have not really had a good chance to look this over. There are things in there we have questions about. This is not fair to expect us to immediately approve this tonight. We're not saying there won't be an approval, but it does not have to be done tonight. And it won't get my vote, no matter what, if we don't get it done, if we vote on it tonight, if we do not go for the table. I want to see more facts. I want to see things straightened out. I don't like this type of operation.
More facts about what?
I'm not getting into anything more about it, because we're we're stretching this out too far. And it it makes me very suspicious of what's going on.
Uh, it's about to get stretched out a lot farther, so everybody get comfortable. Um, i- if if we, if we are torpedoing the deal by by picking it apart, I mean, y'all had the opportunity to respond before this meeting. It's been Alderman Hallit, three meetings that we've been talking about this. And Ansel Glink was here two meetings ago. This is not new. Uh, and so if you're saying you need more information about Ansel Glink, you've had a month to gather that information. Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Yes, I would like to know the outcome of the court hearing on Thursday before I make any decisions about council. Because at the May fifth meeting, Alderman Smith had said, we wish there was a higher power to ask. And mayor, you did ask that higher power, so I want the answer.
Okay. So ultimately, that is what will happen if you guys uh don't want to pass this. But you have to realize that what that means is the city spending a lot of money. Um, when I asked for that declaratory judgment, you know, uh, you, there was a lot of um criticism of me for doing that. I'm so glad that you guys have come around on that now and see that as a good decision. But I have a better option for you now, which is that we don't go to court and that we settle this as a council. And a quid pro quo is when I do something for you, and so you do something for me. A negotiation is not the same as quid pro quo. A negotiation, two parties sit down and they compromise. And that's what we did. And i- you know, this body has the the power to decide to send us to court. And we can do that. There's part of me that wants to do that. But you just have to realize that ultimately, you guys will give account to the people out there for spending a lot more money. Mr. Bond's bill, which we removed from from the appropriation this month for work done after May sixth. How much was that? Was twenty eight thousand dollars. Twenty eight thousand dollars. And so, I mean, is that what you want to tell the community and tell tell the residents that to prove a point, we went to court and we spent tens of thousands of dollars when we had at our fingertips the ability to move past all of this and resolve it? Any of you could have come to me anytime before this meeting. If you had concerns, if you had questions, if you felt like you didn't have enough information. Alderman Myers.
Um, I want to make two points, uh, first, which is that the twenty eight thousand dollars is the largest uh bill that we've ever gotten from him in the last two years. So it's larger than anything that we've ever spent on uh on the firm. Um, and then second is kind of, I guess, a question for the group, like it, could we just appoint a interim corporation counsel? And if it was Mr. Jacobson versus uh Ansel Glink, does that make a difference? Or is it more about, we don't want to appoint anybody and want to go to court on Thursday? Does anybody have any comments about that? Like, is it about Ansel Glink or is it about want to go to court?
Alderman Murano.
I think it's more about uh Mr. Bond and his continued role in the city, not necessarily about Ansel Glink.
And so all of this is about saving Mr. Bond's position?
Not saving it, in the future, as it should be.
That is not going to happen, because I will not appoint him.
And and I know you had mentioned earlier that uh some, any of us could have reached out to you. You and I did reach out to each other. We talked about it, and I told you my opinion.
Yes, Alderman.
I have a question. Did every one of you get um the document, I got it four forty four today, prior to today, from um Attorney Ban?
Yes.
Have we seen that at four forty four today?
Can can you explain for the public what that document is?
The uh, the restraining order, the response to that. And um, so I get, it's just something we're discussing today. Because if everybody got it except for me, um, how am I supposed to? I'm sorry. This, this to me isn't very big disadvantage. I don't like it.
So the
So we're trying to, could could
can could could somebody explain why at 444 I received this document?
So am I understanding correctly that the rest of the council members received it earlier?
No.
No.
I I received.
Mine says 444.
Alderman Myers.
Yeah, I I received it earlier because the first time this this whole thing went around, I asked Mr. Bond not to provide name as a defendant on lead pleading without letting me know ahead of time. Um, and he agreed to that. And then, uh, and I received notice after the response was filed that my name was on on there as a defendant.
That it was on there?
It was on there.
But you had asked that it not be on there?
I had asked to not be included. He he said that he would not include me in any pleading. Um, I don't know the the legal difference between pleading and response, but basically I was I was named as, you know, we all Aldermen agree that the temporary just restraining order uh, is illegal. And my name was put on that without without my approval.
And apparently mine was there too. So this this will do it to me.
So we're kind of back up against the initial issue that we started out with on May 5th. Which I would assert is the fact that a number of the council members here are unwilling to acknowledge our code of ordinances and state statute which which gives the sole appointment powers for the corporate council to the mayor. You know, if 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 this was i- thank you for your candor, Alderman Morano, in saying that this is really about keeping Mr. Bond. Because you as a council, you do not have the power to appoint Mr. Bond. And I will not appoint Mr. Bond. And I will remove Mr. Bond if necessary. I've refrained from doing that to this point. If it doesn't work tonight, then we will use all of our options available. And I don't see how this is going to help the city of West Chicago in any way. Mr. Myers.
Um, I guess I'll go back to my previous question, which is that like, are there any questions that anybody wants to ask of Ansel Blink or Mr. Jacobson? That might make you feel better about pointing them either one of them as interim?
You're right here.
They are right here, but I think that Mr. Morano has made clear to us that this really isn't about any reservations about Ansel Blink or about Mr. Jacobson, but is um, quite clearly an attempt to retain Mr. Bond. Which you do not have the power to do. Mr. Morano.
It's not necessarily to retain him. We believe that his position carries over until someone else moves appointed. We believe that he should still and is her her maze of.
That that doesn't have anything to do with this vote right now. Your interpretation of those ordinance of that ordinance and of those statutes does not have anything to do with this vote. If we vote as a council to approve Ansel Blink, then we will all be agreeing that Ansel Blink is our interim corporate counsel. And there's no questions there. Then we have a clear path forward. And that's really what this kind of boils down to is do you guys want to move forward? I mean, those of you that that spoke with me this week indicated that you're ready to move forward and and get about the business of running this city. This decision flies in the face of that if indeed you torpedo this agreement. But that all all five points um, were conditioned on one another. It it was not a it was not a, you know, i- if 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 we did not if we did not make an agreement with Mr. Gottman, you guys were not going to move forward on the other items. If we did not. Yes, Mr. Myers.
I I just want to make a good bit. I I do think that there was like five important points in that. But the previous item that we discussed with the legislative council was not a litigated. It's like, I think four at a minimum. Um, this one absolutely, but that legislative council one, I don't, I think if that doesn't go through, I don't think that torpedo's anything.
I can see that point, and that's why I'm making this speech now. I am going to recognize Terry Lynn Graff's effort to a- address us.
Yeah, I would just like to make a legal point, not for or against my firm, but to tell you the consequences of what the mayor's saying, saying we kind of translated for you. Okay, the lawsuit is about the mayor's appointment powers. And I did a whole presentation about who has the powers. And really, it would be a fascinating issue to litigate all the way up to the Supreme Court. Because the question in the lawsuit is whether the mayor can just declare a vacancy or whether officers hold over. And really, that issue could go either way in court. But what the mayor just said, that I'm not sure you really picked up on, is that what he has not done, but what he has the ability to do is remove an officer from office on written charges. So if he removes Mr. Bond, then for sure, Mr. Bond doesn't carry over. And it's not a gray area of law. It's a black and white area of law. And the council has the ability to override that with a super majority vote. So you would need 10 votes to put Mr. Bond back in office. So I understand what you're all saying, like, hey, we've made it this far. The trial is in a couple days. Let's get a judge to weigh in. But the fact of the matter is that the mayor can remove Mr. Bond tomorrow. Again, he has to, under the municipal code, present his reasons within five to 10 days. And then he clearly has the ability to make a temporary appointment of whoever he wants. And remember, we weren't his first choice at all. So I just want to make sure when you make whatever decision you're going to make, you understand that the mayor still has the ability to withdraw his lawsuit or not. That's all I want to say.
Alderman Hallit.
I want to say something. I didn't even get any of this till late tonight. I just got back from out of state about 1:30 this morning. And as a result, I have not been able to really dig into what I still don't like rushing into something when we have questions about it. Even if I didn't feel there was something questionable, other council members do, and that has to be taken into consideration. We can't rush the judgment on things just because of one reason or another, you want to get this over. And I understand that. That's how you feel. But we have our feelings about getting things over with too. But anyway, that's what I want to tell you. So it was not the best night for me to be here to begin with. There's been a lot of things going on the last couple of six months.
Alderman Myers.
It would be possible to appoint an interim corporate counsel for two weeks so we can avoid the scenario that Harry Lynn talked about. I mean, I I know you want to table this motion, but to at least like get a clear decision of who is the corporate counsel. And then pick this up at the next meeting if you really do want to table it.
Yes, Alderman Santiago.
So we're we're working towards an interim solution. So you're you're proposing a two-week period versus a six-six-month period. At the end of the day, we'll have an interim council. And then in that timeframe, similarly to the previously discussed points, concurrently probably select a definitive or long-term council. So I mean, we're just kicking the the hand down the road and we're not accomplishing anything. Two weeks, three weeks, six months. Unless we put somebody there permanently.
A- and quite frankly, I don't think that it would be acceptable to those who concur with Alderman Morano's desire to to retain Mr. Bond. Because that's if that's the issue, then two weeks or six weeks, that accomplishes the same thing. Um, I I do want to respond to Mr. Hallit. That I I recognize that, um, you know, there are there are times when it is just uh, difficult to to do what needs to be done. But we're not rushing this through. You know, as I mentioned before, this is the third council meeting that we've gone round and round about these things. Uh, the fourth, really. If you include May 5th. Um, we're still dealing with the same thing. And so you know, yes, would I like to resolve it? Yes. Personally, would that make me feel good? Yes, it would. Is this motivated by how I feel about it? No, it is not. It is motivated by the fact that the city of West Chicago came out and voted in force to bring about change. And there is a tactic of of first of all, to try to force my hand into keeping Mr. Bond and Mr. Gutman. And then to delay. And I do not believe that the people of West Chicago should have to wait another day, let alone two more weeks to have their will carried out. So ultimately, you know, it is up to you what we do tonight. It is not up to you to keep Mr. Bond. That will not happen. And so you're you're really going to torpedo an agreement that would have allowed us to move forward. And the end result will ultimately be the same. Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Um, I actually like Alderman Myers' idea. Um, if we could call it a special corporation counsel, an additional corporate counsel for this two-week period to get us by pending the outcome of that court case.
When you say additional, additional to whom?
Because the code allows us to hire additional attorneys when needed. That's my use of the word additional.
And so Mr. Bond would be retained?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, this would be just for a two-week period for Ansel Blink while we wait the pending outcome of the court case. That was the understanding of.
No.
No?
Yeah, so I'm sorry. I so my my point was like, if so my my interpretation, what what Carolyn said is that if we don't appoint an interim corporation counsel tonight, two weeks or six months, if we don't make a decision here as a council that this is the clear direction that we're giving, then there is a possibility that Mr. Bond will get will get fired. And then the mayor can appoint an interim anyway. And then it becomes a mess. Um, so the whole point was for us as a council to give a clear direction of who is our corporate corporate counsel. So that it is possible to avoid going to court on Thursday and dragging this out maybe longer. But I think we should give very clear direction of this is the corporate.
All right. Uh, Ms. Alderman, I've got the essay.
Sorry, I with this discussion, I would like to, um, say I would hope we can all move forward with a to a point, it's like for corporate counsel. Well, I don't believe we have more time. Um, there's so much to work as a team together. We need to move forward, please. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Myers.
One one up for my for my discussions with Ansel Blink and from the presentations. Um, it's clear they have like a a deep bench of experience. They have a lot of, uh, you know, clients. Um, I just, I feel very confident that they would be able to give us the right kind of advice. Um, so I I'm 100% confident appointing them.
Any further discussion? All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess bathroom break and we will come back uh, at uh, 8:11. All our meeting back to order. Thank you. So just to bring us back to where we were, um, there was a motion under consideration to table, uh, item sure I say it right here, app. It's a table item F, uh, which was the motion to appoint Ansel Blink as interim corporation counsel for a period not to exceed January 5th, 2026 pursuant to attached engagement. So I've got some good news for you guys. It doesn't really matter what we do here. Um, it matters. But, um, let me tell you how I'm going to respond if we table this. Just kind of let you know in advance what my plan is, okay? Um, so if we table this, then either tonight or, um, tomorrow morning, I will issue issue written orders removing uh, Mr. Bond as, um, corporate counsel. And we'll put language in there saying that this does not mean that we've recognized that he has been corporate counsel since May 5th, but to remove any doubt, um, that I am, uh, issuing written orders to remove him. I will then um, call a special meeting. Uh, because within five to 10 days, I will have to report to you on my reasons for removing him, which I will give you in writing. Uh, it's not for cause, but I do have to give you my written reasons. Uh, at that point, as Ms. Graff Graff has 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 mentioned, you can override my decision with 10 votes. Barring that, um, that removal will, uh, according to state statute, the permanence, I will, when I when I, uh, issue the orders removing Mr. Bond, I I'll decide who I want to appoint. So bringing Ansel Blink in was part of a comprehensive compromise that I brought to you guys. I may at this point just go ahead and, uh, retain Mr. Jacobson as corporate counsel. That's something that I will that I will decide later. Um, but there's no disagreement on the fact that when after I have done that, there's no disagreement on the 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 fact that I have the ability to appoint that interim. The only question is again, about the the matter of my ability to declare the vacancy. The only question is, again, about the the matter of my ability to declare the vacancy. Uh, I will also at that point be um uh stopping the lawsuit. Uh, the law, when I say the lawsuits, uh, my request for declaratory judgment, I will be pulling that uh off the table, um, because I don't wanna I don't want to cause the people of West Chicago to spend any more money. And it will be unnecessary at that point. So that was one thing that concerned me, but uh there is a way to to make that to make that stop. Um, and we will be in the same place that we would have been. Mr. Bond will not be the corporate counsel. But, you know, uh, I I will at that point have used my statutory powers to make that decision. And you guys can try to muster ten votes to cancel it. Any discussion? Alderman Demus.
Uh, yes, your honor, I just have a question. Uh, we approved the minutes of June sixteenth, twenty twenty five. And in those minutes, it says it's city attorney Patrick Vaughn, and I believe he swore in uh our new alderman, Isaiah Sergio Santiago. So are we not recognizing that he was our city attorney at that time?
We are not.
And it wasn't a legal where and then.
It doesn't have to be the corporate counsel to swear someone in.
Just questioning the the title of city attorney.
Yeah, that was probably a mistake.
But we've approved that.
Yeah, I don't think that that's going to be determinative in court, but
Just a question.
It's probably not the first mistake we've made.
Okay.
Yeah, Alderman Smith.
Yeah, something for now and I guess for the future, uh, in in all my years being on this council. When there was a motion to table something, there was no discussion. It was an up or down vote. There was no discussion allowed. Now, is that different now or?
Um, I don't know what your tradition was, but there is um we'll tell. Yeah, yeah, I so I am planning on voting on it. That would be uh, that would be outside of my authority to not vote on it. But having discussion on it is is perfectly allowable. It it may be different than what you've done in the past, but again, Robert's rule of order is the thing that dictates, yes, Alderman.
As I recall, on May fifth, where we were all all sworn in, there was a judge, right? Um, and she will have nothing to do with our city council or West Chicago. So um, he is a attorney. And someone like with that uh profession can also affirm it.
Yeah, it 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 could be anyone um even who is a um note enterin who is a notary could have sworn in there, so that's not, there's no 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 doubts there. Alderman Hall.
I'm calling the question.
We will take a roll call.
To do to do what?
Uh, yeah, I yes, let's 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 clarify. Uh, Alderman Demus, would you please uh restate your?
To table item uh nine.
We have a motion to table item nine F. In just a moment, we will call the roll.
Alderman Demus. Alderman Myers. Alderman Bibi.
No.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
No.
Alderman Santiago.
No.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallid.
Aye.
Alderman Carrato Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson. Aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Aye. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
So it passes. Um, that brings us to item G.
Can I make make a warning?
Yes, Alderman Meyer.
Move to appoint Ansel Bling as our corporate counsel for period not to exceed uh July twenty first, twenty twenty five, be our next city council.
Okay, is there a second?
Also do.
Discussion.
Yes, I'd like to ask Ansel Blink if they'd be willing to take those terms.
First of all.
Well, first of all, the appointment would have to be from the mayor, right? It it can't be the council making a motion. The council would have to confirm a mayoral appointment. Are we specifying the time on the twenty first or? I veto this. Um, well, I mean, the the whole deal all the way long has been trying to broker a compromise here, so I don't know if the two weeks helps you at all, if the mayor's gonna remove Mr. Bond anyway, you know? And the compromise here was we tried to create norms and they kept Mr. Bond here as legislative counsel, but that was also tabled. So I I don't know that even if you make an appointment and I agree to take it, stay on till the twenty first before I can get to if the mayor removes him and the lawsuit doesn't go through and I I don't think the lawsuit is going to be done this week. I think whatever happens, I think it would go up to the appellate court. I think that they don't have municipal due page meters and managers are watching it and might intervene in it. I mean, so it's it's not like, oh, we're gonna have the answer on Thursday and then we know. We we don't know, so that's, you know, that's part of it. And by the way, throughout this whole process, I have told everybody what I think the strengths and the weaknesses of their positions are. I've been through that with Mr. Bond, Mr. Jacobson, the mayor, Mr. Gutman's attorney. So, you know, I think it's really, it's a fascinating legal issue. But so I I just don't know, I I would do it, you want to do it till the twenty first, I just don't think, you know, that's who we really want to be.
So, um the appointment would have to come from me and I do think it would move us to a better place. And so if the council is uh willing to support that motion, I would amend my, I would amend my appointment to a can we, what if we said a month, just so it's not quite so such a tight timeframe?
And then we would amend our engagement letter for a month to them.
Yeah. Why don't you um amend your motion?
Yeah, so I'd like to amend my motion uh to appoint Ansel Bling as interim corporate counsel until August fourth.
To confirm the mayor's appointment.
Confirm the mayor's appointments.
Uh, is August fourth our next council meeting? I mean, the the date of the city council.
Yes, yes, okay.
Or use a coverage. Could we do the fifth? So that way through that council meeting, we would have coverage.
August.
All right. Um, do we have a second?
I second it, sure.
Thank you, twice, all right. Does that make it a third?
Maybe.
So uh, any discussion? Alderman Santiago.
So in a month's time, will we be at the same point and having the same conversation to, again, extend it for another month or another two months or X period of time? Because we're still not in agreement with this. So I I guess let me rephrase my question or statement. Um, in in a month's time, that'll give us enough time for everybody to review and gather all the information needed in order to come in and make a decision going forward permanently, not an interim period, right? Maybe a permanent decision in a month's time. So I'd like to prepare myself for that by gathering uh any information that I need before that meeting comes to be. That's two meetings away, right? In order for all of us to be educated, whatever we need to to have, whatever questions need to be asked and answered. So we're not sitting here spinning our wheels again to begin this conversation.
Alderman Murano.
I I think despite the perception, uh, it's all of our, I think all of our plan is to find a permanent solution, so yeah, I understand that you're concerned about getting kicking the can down the road a little bit more and I it I I agree to a certain extent. Um, but we can buy a little bit more time again, I I would like to find a permanent solution as well. You mean, maybe it isn't a month's time, that would be great question.
Um, not yet. But I do have that it's August fifth.
Can you repeat the wording for the mo- on the motion?
Yeah, sure, uh, this motion is to confirm the mayor's appointments of Ansel Bling as interim corporate counsel counsel for a period not to exceed August fifth, twenty twenty five pursuant to the attached engagement letter. For the modified making killer.
Thank you. Let's let's uh call the roll.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson. Aye. Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallid. Alderman Carrato Munos. Aye. Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Aye. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
That carries. Um we need to clap so that Carrie, that doesn't feel a lot like it now. We started the precedent, but they're having to knock that now. Um, so that brings us to item G, selection of special counsel to represent the city of West Chicago related to the city of West Chicago, the Daniel Bovee and Jody Bovee litigation. That is the greenhouse lawsuit in popular parlance. Do we have a motion? Oh, sorry, sorry, hold on, hold on. This uh, this due to a um uh, the fact that I'm involved in a conflict of interest, um, I would like to call on Alderman Myers to take over this um uh, uh, point, point G for me so that I can um, recuse myself from the process and then I will come back in on point H.
Okay. So what are you doing here? Sort of motion, good.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What we've been provided is this. Carolyn, are you gonna give us a presentation on the firms, strengths, weaknesses?
Well, I'm happy to, I'm happy to tell you about all the firms. So first of all, I was looking at general firms. I was looking for general firms that are known to do municipal law. But um, some of them actually told me that they do specialty work for West Chicago and then they couldn't do it. So that was narrowing my list. So I think I put Mr. David Friedman with Robin Schwartz. So he has been a longtime municipal attorney, he's been practicing municipal law for over forty years. He works out of Lyle. Um, so he, Robin Schwartz is a firm that does a lot of school law, but he's the head of their municipal division within there. And I know, I believe Mr. Jacobson knows him and Mr. Bond knows him. And so he's just, um, he and I called him. He did not believe he had any conflicts at all with the city of West Chicago, and so he would be willing to handle it. I myself don't know a lot about this litigation, so I didn't give everyone a big overview of it. I was just trying to determine if people were available for specialty work. So he was available, he has time, he would be available to do it. The next one is Mr. Ross Sekler. He's also a municipal attorney, he's with the law firm of of Oldson, Murphy, Fraser and McGrath, they are located in Evergreen Park, but they represent a lot of municipalities. Um, and I believe also Mr. Jacobson and Mr. Bond are familiar with them. I did talk to Mr. Oldson, who told me Mr. Sekler had availability to to handle this. And so they they represent dozens of municipalities and they have also done that for a very long time. The third person is Mr. James Kelly. He is with a law firm out of uh McHenry County. And he does not do a lot of municipal law, but the reason why I added him to the list is that he is incurred, he's currently involved in litigation in the city of Calumet City, where he is representing the city clerk in litigation against the mayor. So he's used to disputes with different factions of different cities. Uh, my only concern about him is that because he's a one man operation, I don't know. Uh, I don't know that that he would have the same amount of time that Mr. Freeman or Mr. Sekler would. I included in there the link to both of their websites. And if Mr. Jacobson and Mr. Bond have, you know, I I have comments on on them, but but those are the three that I came up with that would be able to do this.
Any other questions?
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, any preference on your side, if you were gonna rank them based on like what what we're going through, experience, everything else?
Um, I think Ross Sekler would probably be able to get it. Yeah, I I think so.
Um, and then the only other thing to just, is there any concerns with the defendant using his appointed council member to pick the attorney that's gonna go up against him?
With the defendant using.
Right, so Dan Bovee, I assume is the defendant in the case, right?
Yes, with him doing what?
He appointed you and you you're doing the selection process for the attorney that's gonna go.
Well, I I I wanted to give you guys an array of, I mean, if you don't want to use Mr. Sekler, because I just said maybe use him.
No, 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 I just, I'm asking from a legal standpoint, but I I don't mean this in a facetious way.
Well, first of all, I don't view what just happened here as me like being appointed by the mayor, really. I mean, probably should have gotten it five hour ago. But I'm happy that, you know, at least for for thirty one days, I get the confidence of the council. You know, kind of work through these things. But, you know, in in certainly in this corporation counsel, we don't work for the mayor. We work for the city of West Chicago, which is the corporation of the coun- council with corporate authorities, which is the mayor and the city council. So believe me, if I ever think he's doing something wrong, you will hear that I think he's doing something wrong. You guys are doing something crazy, I'm gonna tell you that too. So I'm not, I'm not trying to control who's representing this litigation.
Oh, no, and again, I'm not saying that. Again, I'm just wondering from a legal standpoint, that there's no problems with us selecting one of these people, then.
I don't believe so. I mean, technically, the mayor would select if what you do have the ability under your code is one of your aldermen pointed out for you to appoint special counsel. So this would be you appointing the special counsel, removing the mayor from this.
You have a question? Alderman Stout.
Yeah, um, I would like to make a recommendation, let me go with council's choice uh recommendation for Ross Sekler to be the council for special counsel for uh city relating to this issue.
And are you intending that as a motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
I'll run seconds. Discussions, discussion. So roll call, those two are good.
Uh, Alderman Stout. Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallid. Alderman Carrato Munos. Aye. Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson. Aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto. Alderman Myers.
Aye.
All right, that brings us um to H, which I'm going to pull. to H, which I'm going to pull because I'm gonna be, um, I'm gonna be, uh, removing that lawsuit anyways. Um, and that brings us to I, um, which is an ordinance, um, number 2500021, ordinance amending chapter 16, article 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of West Chicago to in- increase the home rule of municipal retailers' occupation tax and home rule municipal service occupation tax. My recommendation on this one is that we leave it tabled. It, it, it seems like we have enough issues that we're going through and it seems like there's still a lot of meaningful discussion that's happening on that. Um, so I would entertain a, well, no, I don't need to entertain a motion. It's just, we just, i- if we don't take it off the table, then it just stays on, on the table. So, just informally, are you all good with, are you all good with that? Anybody upset with that? Okay. Um, J, uh, discussion, possible action on use of third-party search agency in finding um, a new administrator. And, um, I will preface that one by saying that, uh, uh, well, thank you to, uh, Ms. Messino for, um, putting together kind of a, a briefing for us on that uh, process and these different, uh, proposals. I would be happy, uh, honestly, to use any of the, 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 the three. But my, um, inclination, um, a, in the same sense that Ms. Krafttepper, um, uh, mentioned, you know, that, uh, one of the attorneys was a, an individual rather than a large firm. Uh, my inclination is to kind of, um, not use, uh, uh, the, uh, aren't. I don't know how to say that exactly. Don't use aren't, um, who is the individual. And also, uh, not to use MGT, which is the more expensive option. Um, uh, but my inclination, my meaning is towards SGR, which saves us $10,000, but I think that they would do a good job. Having said that, I'm fine with any of the three of them. And at this point, um, let's, uh, entertain a, a, a motion, um, to discuss and have possible action on the use of third-party search agency in finding a new administrators, a motion for Alderman.
Do we need a motion?
You don't need a motion, motion for discussion.
But possible action.
I think we need to discuss it first.
Yeah. Moving to action.
Um, yes, uh, we can, we can.
Leading into possible action?
We, we, we can take it in two parts and just do some discussion first. I'm fine with that. Um, Alderman Murano, I think you had your hand up first.
Yeah, and I, I was getting really excited when you dismissed the one because I was hoping we were gonna get a good agreement tonight. But, uh, I was leaning towards MGT just based on the proposals we have here. Some of, um, are familiarity with them. They've done some great work for other cities, are as far as included on including our police chief search, things like that. Um, they do really, really great work. I, I do understand there is a, you know, a, a significant, not a significant, but there's a, a good amount of price difference, right? So, um, it certainly is something in an easy way, but, um, just based on things that they've done in the past and their work on MGT, right, is the only one I can really speak to in a possible.
Uh, Alderman and Demus.
Uh, yes, I, well, I would agree with Alderman Murano. As I looked at the proposals, uh, I agree that, you know, the unfamiliarity with the other two, especially the single person I would agree with that 100%. Uh, but MGT has a familiarity with the way we do things here. They have familiarity with our staff. Um, and they have brought us some really great, uh, people already. And so, um, I would highly recommend them as well. You know, there's a little bit of a price difference of it. If that's why, since they do framework.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Um, I agree with leaning toward MGT. I like that their proposal included stakeholder engagement and a community survey because our community is begging to interact with us, especially for this role. I think it's very important as we reach out to our community. And I think sometimes we have to spend money and we know we'll be spending our money while hiring MGT based on our past interactions.
Alderman Myers?
I, I came into this, uh, meeting, uh, not knowing any of these three. And I was, I was between MGT and SGR, and my first question was to be, see, but I haven't experienced with these firms. And so what I'm hearing is pretty loud and clear that we should have experience, especially, I know, uh, Casino was hired through MGT, um, and Police Chief, sounds like I didn't, I know that, um, so I, I get.
Alderman Murano.
Yeah, and again, this isn't necessarily just to justify the price difference, um, but, I mean, I, I think everyone here, I'm sure the mayor included, would agree that it's probably the most important role that we're gonna be hiring for. Uh, we wanna get the right person in that role, um, obviously, permanent stance. So I think getting the right person at work, at the time to get it right.
Well, I don't wanna slight our chief of police, so I'm not getting, getting into the arguments of, uh, which role is more important.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It is.
That works for me.
It is an, it is, it is an important role. Let's just all agree on that. Very important. Yes. Um, with, with, any other, uh, any other discussion? So I, like I said, um, I don't, uh, I'm, I'm happy to work with any of these, any of these three. Um, you know, $10,000 here, $10,000 there. Pretty soon it adds up to real money, as they say. But, uh, uh, if, if you guys feel strongly enough that our experiences with MGT, um, uh, would be worth spending, that, making that expenditure, um, we definitely do wanna get this right. And I fully agree with that. Um, you know, a wrong decision, uh, can cost a lot more than $10,000. Any other discussion? Alderman Stout.
With that, I'd like to make a motion when we go with, um,
Attorney.
GT, uh, for this, uh, search process, we're filling those administrative positions.
Is there a second? Yep, Alderman Switek, I saw that hand first. Uh, any further discussion? But it's called a roll.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett. Alderman Careto Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Marano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
I'd like to get it voted.
Oh, I'm so sorry. For you. I apologize when that happened. These lines are starting to blur together on me.
Aye.
It's a very full sheet, I can attest.
That was elder abuse.
I will assign myself some training. We did, you did say aye.
Aye, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, um, that brings us, uh, to the end of our unfinished business. Um, I don't believe we have any new business. Um, upcoming meetings, July 14th, Development Committee, uh, July 21st, Public Affairs Committee, August 4th, Finance Committee. And, um, that brings us to Mayor's Comments, number 12. Uh, again, thank you, uh, public for being here, uh, tonight. And, you know, for the last, uh, four meetings. Uh, appreciate, um, that we have a community that really cares about what is going on here. And, um, uh, that we have people that will actually sit here for, uh, uh, however many hours this has been and, and listen to us, uh, listen to us talk. Um, Alderman Birch Ferguson mentioned, uh, the desire to have the public, uh, in- involved in this decision of the city administrator. And I can affirm that no matter who we picked in this process, um, uh, I'm fully committed to getting the community and public, um, very involved in this process and to it being a transparent, um, process that, that you can, that you can be part of. So I do have the statutory appointing powers. Um, I get the, the advice of these people here and ultimately their consent. And I very much want all of your advice as well. So we will, we will be, um, we will be doing things to ensure that, um, there's ample opportunity for the public to get involved, uh, in that process. I did wanna just, um, respond to a couple of our, uh, public comment items. Um, Mr. Jarris, thank you for, for your comments. Um, it, uh, appreciate your concern, um, on our, our spending. And it was noted that you brought up the, um, uh, the 200 Main Street, uh, building. Uh, and we will, we will be, we will be working to, um, my, my, my commitment is to, to work to ensure that that, that kind of thing doesn't happen again, uh, in, in the future. Um, uh, tho- tho- though it is a lovely building, um, I think, uh, most would, um, agree that, uh, there were mistakes made. And part of that was, um, left hand not knowing what the right hand was doing, where they were having to get advice from the historical preservation as well as community development, which resulted in some duplication of, of efforts. Um, you know, uh, and it is what it is at this point. Um, we do have a beautiful building and we will try to, to use it well. But, uh, point, point taken. Um, uh, I, I've already kind of responded to your comments about Mr. Gutman's, um, contract. And I think that, um, uh, you know, that what, what was, what was given to him in terms of his contract by previous administrations, um, I could not take back. And so, uh, essentially, the, um, the sick leave and the vacation leave was something that was uh, already a, a legal responsibility that we have. We were able to use that to get a deal done, which allows us to, um, exit, uh, Mr. Gutman and move forward on our search, uh, for, for a new person. And meanwhile, um, uh, have Ms. Messino, um, helping us in that role. Uh, and then, uh, Ms. Handel, uh, thank you also for your comments. And, um, uh, it, it's duly noted that you would like to ensure that we're making this decision on good data, good information, and that the sentiment that we want to relieve the most vulnerable population of bearing the brunt of the cost does, as you say, need to be verified with data to ensure that, that that's not just a, uh, that that's not just sentiment, but that we're actually, um, that we're actually, uh, doing what we intend to do and solving the problem which we are, uh, trying to solve uh, in, in, in the way that we make that decision. So we do have some more time now to, to get more data and, and verify some of those things. So thank you for that. Um, thank you for that comment, um, as well. Thank you, uh, to, uh, Carrie Lynn and, um, uh, for, uh, being here and being willing to, um, uh, to, uh, put up with us for the next 31 days at least. Um, and, uh, uh, thank you, um, uh, just counsel for moving us to a place where we can, where we can start to make some of those transitions. I, I, I do, um, I do, I do intend to, uh, bring, you know, uh, item, uh, E, uh, back again to you next, next time. And, and trust that you will take these few weeks to do your due diligence and research anything that you need to research and, um, uh, reach out to whoever you need to so that we can, so that we can, uh, bring that back in our, in our, in our next meeting. So, thank you. And, um, Alderman Hallett?
Aye. I have a comment.
Okay.
I'm gonna be gone for the rest of the month.
Okay.
And in order to keep your feet in the fire.
Yeah.
I'm appointing my good friend, John Smith. And if, if the blowtorch don't work, use a flamethrower.
Okay. Do you, do you feel up to that? Do you have to feel up to filling those shoes, Alderman Smith?
Those are big shoes to fill.
All right. Well, um, thank you so much. And, um, with that, we will take a motion to adjourn. I saw Alderman Birch Ferguson second. I saw Alderman Alcantara Garcia. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.